Good afternoon, everybody. Thanks for joining us today. This is the Aspen City Council Work Session for June 10th, 2024. Tonight's agenda for us, our interviews for boards and commissions, grants program policy discussion, ballot questions and motor vehicle use tax discussion, and food tax refund program update and direction. We're going to go ahead and start off with our interviews because we have folks here that are joining us and they deserve to go first. So we're going to start off with CCLC. CCLC is our first one, but we have Deborah Sevier. Come on up, if you will, to this front table. And then Kiki is reapplying for her position, but she is out of town. And so not expecting her to attend today. Yep, that's great. Good afternoon. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks for applying and your willingness to serve on one of our boards or commissions. Are you familiar with the CCLC? Do you know when they meet? And do you know their role and responsibilities?
I feel like I have a pretty good understanding of their role and responsibilities. I know they meet twice a month on the first and third Wednesday in the morning, I believe, at 8:30. I know Amanda and New Amy Kiss Baldwin very, pretty well. And I certainly have a long and lengthy background in lodging, in the lodging and hotel industry and have been in Aspen for about 10 years. So I wouldn't want to say that I'm the expert on knowing all the ins and outs of everything that they're doing for our community, but I think that I have a pretty good working knowledge of what they have contributed so far. And it's a, it's a position and a group of people that I have been really eager to contribute and be a part of for several years since relocating here about 10 years ago. So I'm excited for the opportunity to finally come at a time when I'm kind of positioned well personally with my family and my career and to be able to contribute a little bit more in a non-paid volunteer position and give back to the community that way.
Is there anything in particular that you're thinking that CCLC could benefit from your participation? Is there something, a burning issue that you have? Or are you looking for an opportunity to participate on this board for, for all the reasons?
Yeah, that's a really broad question. And I, I think that certainly in some ways I'm looking to participate in a handful, you know, in many capacities, whatever those may be. I've worked as an election judge here with the election process and intend to do that again. But specifically related to this commission, what I think that I bring with me is, is a couple of things that are very significant. One is I have an incredibly diverse background in both hospitality and federal government, where I worked for over just about 12 years with the Department of Homeland Security and about 25 years in hotel sales and marketing management, which is a really unusual combination and skill sets. And I'm also older and quite mature and have a pretty solid academic background. And I think what I can contribute to any group that I work in is maybe a little bit different and unique perspective on what we tend to have as very common or situations that become common or that we think we're facing every day or we know the answers to, maybe, you know, having a new bird's eye view on things. And I think that I also have, you know, I'm very grounded. And mostly I think I'm bringing a tremendous amount of passion for Aspen with me everywhere I go. I'm currently managing a local business that's been very successful for many years here in Aspen in the core. And I tell people every day, you know, I don't think anyone should leave Aspen with anything but magical memories. This is not a conference center location in Dayton, Ohio. No disrespect to anybody from Dayton.
Excellent. That's the room.
That's my one liner. But you know, this, when you come here, people, they, they're here for, you know, you have to go out of your way to get here. We're not even veil. You can't just pass by us. You have to work to get up here. And I think when you get here, it should be pretty special and pretty magical. And it's never lost on me any day that I'm here. And so having the opportunity to contribute to that ongoing vitality, this is my home. I have a granddaughter that's in fourth grade here and moved here about 10 years ago with her mother. And the three of us are a little modern family. So I have a really personal vested interest in this as well. And I just want to, you know, I could be the spokesperson for Aspen probably if they had one of their welcome wagon lady, but that really dates me, doesn't it?
Do you live in the city of Aspen Limits?
Yes, sir. I certainly do.
Thanks. Do you live in the core or?
I, I live just near the hospital.
Thank you. Anybody else for questions, Ward, if you'd like?
Thank you for applying and your willingness to serve. Do you attend the Saturday Market at all?
Yes, I do.
That's one of the major functions of CCLC is assigning and managing participants in that.
I'm actually scheduled to work with Betty Wallace this coming Saturday as part of the Pick and Dems. But yes, I attend the City Market on my own almost every weekend that we're here because it's just fun and beautiful and.
It's good to take a lap.
It certainly is. Yep.
All right. Well, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Sam?
I was wondering, have you attended or watched any CCLC meetings?
There are specific meetings? I have not.
No. They've come up with something called like block captains, where each of them has sort of taken over a block downtown. Is there a block downtown that you have most interest in?
Well, naturally I'd want to claim mine, which is on the corner of Spring Street and Main. But actually, at the same time, I would be willing to jump into just about any block. I think it's always really good to sort of spread your wings and learn what's happening. I actually love that idea. In my management positions, I'm really well known and it's become kind of funny, but it also works, the brigade system mentality of things. So when you talk about claiming blocks, that kind of goes hand in hand with the way I like to do things. And I like the idea of taking ownership of something like that and breaking it down. That way seems very prudent.
And with that, you only need to answer this if you have thought about it, but part of the block captain thing and the CCLC, I feel like they've started taking ownership of the homeless population, the transient population in downtown. And do you have any thoughts on that, how it relates to CCLC and what you might want to see done?
I'd have to really roll up my sleeves and, and get some more details on the. Yeah, I'm kind of a data person. I'd like to see what research they've done and what they know about it. But from my own, what I gleaned from my experience as an Aspen resident over 10 years, I've obviously seen that situation change dramatically right before our eyes. It's a difficult one. I've seen what's happening in, in Southern California and with some of the efforts that they're pursuing there to, you know, they're on a, obviously a much larger scale than we would ever do here. I think it's an incredibly important cause. And obviously, again, with, with family here in town, you know, providing welfare outreach and trying to be part of the solution is important rather than just turning a blind eye to it.
Great. Thank you so much.
My pleasure. Thank you.
John, do you have any additionals?
No questions, but thanks for your enthusiasm and serving on a board and your attitude towards all things Aspen mirrors my own. Thanks.
Thank you, John.
Bill, any questions?
Yeah, thanks, everyone. Nice to see you. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you applying. A couple of questions. One, did you also apply for HPC? Did I see that in the package?
For what?
For the Historical Preservation Commission?
It's actually my daughter. Our names are very close to one another. And she's at the courthouse and unable to, I think she, she may be on her way over, but.
Got it. Thanks for clarifying.
My pleasure.
I think that my questions were going to be along those lines. So appreciate your interest in this. Thanks for being here.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It was a pleasure to meet you. We'll let you know soon. Like I said, we do have a real applicant that we can't communicate with today. So we'll try to reach out to her, though. And we'll let you know soon. Thank you so much.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate being here.
Just for council, to remind you, there's, that's one open seat and it is the seat that Kiki has that she is reapplying for. The next committee that we are going to be interviewing for is Grants Steering Committee. We have one regular member and one alternate member as our openings. And we have two applicants. Anne Mullins is here. If you want to come on up to the table. And Morgan Fixell, come on up to the table. So chicken bone. Morgan, hi.
Hi.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Anne has been the acting chair at the Grants Steering Committee, which is something that's new over the last couple of years and such. Are you familiar with what the Grants Steering Committee does?
I am. And I think John just mentioned to me that there are two regular seats.
Oh, right, right, right. Sorry.
No, it's okay.
Correction. In our memo, guys, in our memo it says one and one, but it's two.
Thanks for that.
So yes, I've, I've learned a little bit. So I've been on the Grants Nonprofit Board now for a year. And in talking to Anne, actually while she was in London a couple of times, just about a few of my ideas after reading all the grants and then John and also Chris Menez, who is currently a member, they all encouraged me to think about applying to steering and explained that it meets once a month. And it is materially not a lot more work than what we do as a regular grant committee member because a lot of the work during that time is time boxed and Steering Committee ends up making more policy decisions kind of throughout the year. She confirmed that.
It sounds to me like you are aware of the board and what it is.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Are there other members of council that have any questions for either one? I'm sorry, Anne. I'm not ignoring you. I just.
That's okay.
I know you know.
Well, and I would like to add, yeah, that Megan was one of, was on one of the three review committees and was one of the most vocal about bringing up questions about applications, about applicants, how to proceed. So I gather that you're very interested in policy and would be, I think she would be great on the steering. She shouldn't take my place.
It's a co-application apparently.
Yeah, exactly right. Mutual support for applicants. I like it. Does anybody have any other follow-up questions? I'll start with Bill.
Thanks. Hi, Morgan. Good to see you. Hi, Anne. Thank you both for your involvement. I guess my question's a curiosity. If, if you're appointed to this, will you still serve on the other board?
No.
Can one still serve on both?
No.
No. And the other, tell me what the other board was. Just make sure I'm clear on.
It was the nonprofit board within the Grants Committee.
Just a friendly reminder, the structure of the Grants Steering Committee, the city council appoints the steering committee members. It is a chairperson along with one who focuses on health and human services, one individual who focuses on community nonprofits, and one who focuses on arts and culture. And then those, each individuals are responsible for overseeing the grant review process within that program area, including overseeing those actual grant reviewers. So she's one of our stellar grant reviewers for the last few years and is stepping up and offering to be in a larger role for the program.
Got it. And which, you're under the nonprofit section of the grant. And so is that what you would head up on the steering committee?
I believe Grant Steering is over all of the.
It is over all. We did, last year we had kind of a liaison, someone who would answer questions. But the idea is that the Steering Committee is not looking at the specific applications that we're looking at the program overall and coming up with policy and taking comments from the reviewers from the three other committees to kind of guide us in what we need to look at.
Fantastic. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
John first and then Ward?
Seems like a very good fit. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks.
Morgan, you mentioned that you spoke with Anne when she was in London a couple of times. Were you in London or?
No, I wish. I was home. I have a 16-month-old. So my international travel has been grounded for the foreseeable future.
Well, I think Matt would be happy to meet a new little kid. So next time, go to London. Thank you very much for applying in your past involvement. And this looks like a no-brainer. Thank you.
Anything additional?
Yeah, no brainer. Thank you so much.
Hey, thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that's, that's all. We have, we have a work session coming up here about some grant policy stuff. So I think maybe you'll be hanging out a little bit.
Thank you.
Very much. Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
The next one is Kids First. We've got Steph is here. Emily is here. And Dakota was online, may be able to come over, may not. So Emily, come on up. Steph, come on up.
While they're getting ready, I thought it's worth reminding us that Ramona Bruhlend applied last time when we talked about the fact that there were going to be some additional openings. So I don't know if we contacted her again to see if she's still interested in doing that or not, but I think she's fantastic and we should keep her name in the running if she's interested, which I have not verified personally.
Hi.
Hello.
Steph, again, you've been serving as co-chair and doing this for a couple of years already. So I know that you are familiar with the work that Kids First has done and is doing and will do. Emily, I think you are pretty well associated with the issue around childcare and Kids First and their role in our community. You're applying for, right now we have one regular member and one alternate member openings. Can you just tell us a little bit about your interest in the Kids First Board?
Absolutely. I am looking for a way to apply my skill set. And that is in business, education, early childhood education. And I have time and a passion for early childhood education that I'd like to utilize in our community. And that's where I thought the Kids First Board would be an appropriate fit.
Have you been following the discussions that have gone on council table and at Kids First over the last just few years regarding capacity and the proposed childcare center out at Burlingame?
I have.
I mean, brief, that's a long, big topic. But if you have any brief comments about what do you see in that whole discussion?
Which part would you like me to speak to?
About capacity and the need or the movement towards building that facility at Burlingame. How do you feel about those two items?
I think that it's a, an important discussion to be having. Currently, if you look at the Kids First website, you'll see that there's occupancy within several centers. Whether that actually meets the needs of the community, both financially, at a high level of quality care, and also in the development of our professionals, I'm not entirely sure. I think one of the opportunities that the Burlingame Development has is to further the, the potential to both bring in professionals to support the community and to meet the needs of the existing community and provide a really high level of childcare programming. And I think that that's something that our community deserves.
Thank you so much for that. Other council members, if you've got any questions, I'll start down with Ward this time.
Thank you. Thank you for applying and your willingness to serve. I kind of address this to both you and thank you, Stefan, for all your engagements. You mentioned the, the needs and capacities. For both of you, it's been a kind of a moving target because every, for the last few years, we've heard different numbers for how many you, how many spaces are available or needed in the different, the three different H categories for ECE. So I'd like to see if you could, both of you could comment on what the, the current assessment is of the number, the amount of need and the amount of capacity.
Would you like to go first or me?
No, ladies first.
Well, thank you.
That was a very complicated question.
So the current numbers are current. And I think one of the most important things is that we're forward-thinking and that if our intention is to build something, it's going to take time. So we need to be looking at something that's five and 10 years down the road and quite frankly, 15 to 25 years down the road. The facility that's built should be able to meet the needs of our, of our future community, one in which that is also contingent upon our current housing and keeping our employee workforce vibrant and, and growing in a nice way that it's community developing as well. And I think that if, that within that, as we have families and we're encouraging people to move to this community with families and to bring the professionalism, to have a facility that I can accommodate and also inspire, I think that's something that we can put forth.
Yeah, I just follow up on that. I wasn't targeting the BG3 specifically. I was talking about the community and obviously it takes a few years to build capacity in BG3. So the numbers we have now are probably not the numbers we're going to have them, then. You know, because those kids that are, are applying now are going to be in kindergarten or first grade by the time something's built out there. So I'm curious as your comfort level of what the future needs are so we can project what our capacity should be. So the three years from now, if we have a new facility at the BG3, are we able to go to fill it? And as you mentioned, you know, housing's important to have people who live, that can actually work in these facilities is a challenge.
Yes. Yeah.
So the, the question is, you know, projections of. So the, the question is, you know, projections of need in the future to shoehorn that with or to coordinate that with capacity increases at BG3.
Sure. So I don't know the exact numbers, but I do look forward to learning about them. I'm an avid reader and will definitely delve into that specifically, for sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think for myself, the, I think that number one is an extremely hard question to answer and I would rather go about the thought process a little bit differently, is that when you think about a family that is in Aspen or moving to Aspen, they, they make a lot of hard decisions, right? And it's not, you know, what ski run do I want to be on? It is, how am I going to find housing? Where am I going to find a job? And what I see from, and especially, these were conversations that I've had over the last 10 years and mainly over the last seven, especially when we were doing a lot of the work with Kids First, reaching out to business people in the community and asking them, how can, you know, is there a demand for additional childcare? And the resounding reason was, yes, and it was because that person moved to Aspen in their early twenties, now they're in their early thirties and they want to start a family and they can't find a space for their child. And so then they move to somewhere else, so back home or to another community that will provide them childcare. And so, yes, the numbers are, don't look good, right? The numbers that I told city council last week on Tuesday were effectively that we have 120 kids that are born every year, 80 of them want childcare, and we have 32 infant spaces. So effectively, we're failing 50 families every single year. And then infant care is from zero to 18 months, so technically you can times that number by, it's 1.5, right? So we're effectively failing 75 families every single year. So that is really not a good thing to be doing every year and also for that business owner that has invested 10 years into that person, all of a sudden having them leave to another community or leave to back home or whatever they do, that's not good. Also, that person might just say, you know what, I'm going to take the next five years and I'm going to, you know, raise my child. Well, what I would love for us to, to do as a community is to see childcare as a reason to come to this community. You know, why do we have, you know, a great Aspen Rec Center? It's because that builds community. Why do we have an amazing ski resort? That brings people to the community. And when I talk to business owners and they tell me that we cannot bring in somebody with a child because I have no ability to provide them housing and childcare, we're failing that family. So that was a long-winded answer to your question.
No, but it was very to the point and it just shows how interconnected all of these things are. Thank you.
Yep. Thanks, Ward.
Anything additional?
No, just thank you so much.
Yeah, Emily, thanks for your enthusiasm. You clearly have done your homework and I, I think you'd be a, a great addition to the board and Steph and I obviously think you're a, a huge asset to our board. So thanks. Thank you both for tying the childcare and housing issue together because they definitely go hand in hand. Thanks.
Thanks. Bill, any further?
No, just thanks for both of you being here and for your service in the past. Appreciate it.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our last one is with Dakota again, and that's the HPC application.
Got it.
There is one regular member opening, so we will have to schedule another time for that. I think we'd also want to talk with Kiki as well, give her a chance to interview for a reappointment to CCLC, so we will have to get a couple more interviews scheduled at a work session that can handle it. Let's jump on to topic two. We're going to get on to grants program. Good afternoon.
My name is Patrick Quick. I'm the Director of the Strategy and Innovation Office. Joining me today, John Barker, our Deputy Director, and Natalie Blumentritt, our Grants Coordinator. And collectively, we manage the Aspen Grants Program. And we're here today to discuss potential policy options for you and changes to the program. As you know, we are sort of in between our cycles right now, from now until this fall. So it's the perfect opportunity for us to pause and reflect on the program and see what's working and what could work better in the future in time for our next cycle, starting this fall. This is just a quick reminder of our volunteer committee structure and the foundation of that being our review committee, which reviews all of our applications and scores against an impact criteria that funnels up then to our grant steering committee, which finalizes the scoring and then goes through a funding formula and comes to you for adoption.
And just a, a quick note here, this represents not including council 20 volunteers in the community involved in making decisions on grants.
We want to pause here on this next slide just to thank our committee members. We certainly could not run the grants program without them. On the right is our, is our review committee and on the left-hand side is our steering committee. And Ann Mullins is our Chair, Tracy Anderson, Judy Clausen, and Chris Mingus are our members of the steering committee. Quick overview of the program. We should all be proud that over $19 million has been invested back into nonprofits in our community over the course of the Aspen Grants Program, going back several years. Currently, the grants program is divided into three divisions. Our Health and Human Services Division, Arts and Culture, and then Community Nonprofit. And Community Nonprofit, as you know, are all of the nonprofits applicants that do not fall under HHS or Arts and Culture. We have two primary methods of support. Our cash program, which is what everyone is most familiar with across all three of our divisions, and then our in-kind support as well. That includes things like usage of the Wheeler Opera House or Ice Time, for example. We have three pilot programs in operation for this last cycle. The HHS Capacity Building Program, Asset Acquisition Support, and Cultural Vibrancy Fellowship. We'll get into each of those specifically in just a moment. This is just a look at our current budget. So the 23-24 cycle budget was $900,000 for Arts and Culture, $555,000 for Community Nonprofit, $220,000 for Health and Human Services, and an estimated $157,000 in in-kind support. This slide represents our cash requests over the last four years. As you can see and as you know, the demand continues to increase year over year pretty substantially, 15% increase from 20, in 2022, 29% in 2023, and a 35% increase in 2024. So in all, over a four-year period, our cash requests have over-doubled in that time. So we just wanted to provide a quick overview of the program before we jump into the policy discussion, which is going to be led by John Barker.
Any questions on an overview before we get into? Great. All right. So thank you, Patrick, for helping us set the stage. And so in order to address, you know, primarily that, that doubling and exponentially increasing demand on the program, we have some policy proposals to discuss with you today and I wanted to share a little bit about how we got here, right? Because the first thing that we did after the conclusion and during the conclusion of our 2023-2024 grant cycle was to ask our, our stakeholders and listen. And so this, this, this process that's culminating today started with one-on-one conversations with applicants, volunteers, members of the, of the steering committee and others to figure out what their experience with our program was, what, what their pain points were, and how we can incorporate trying to resolve those while also thinking about the overall program. Based on those conversations, along with data, you know, that we have as, as staff in the steering committee about the program, we took an, an, an initial stab at drafting solutions. Those solutions were challenged internally through the four primary stakeholder lenses of applicants, program volunteers, you all as council members, and as staff. And those proposals evolved and got better and ultimately were presented to the steering committee where they were further refined and prioritized into the proposals that we're going to see here today. So the, the, the first one that, that we would like to discuss with you is about formalizing our grant boundary. For the duration that the Strategy and Innovation Office has been involved with the grant program, and I believe before that, we've had an informal boundary of the Roaring Fork Valley. As our grant program has grown, what the Roaring Fork Valley means has changed and we feel like it's time that we formalize this to organizations with a zip code and a physical presence within the Aspen to Glenwood corridor. We recognize that for a small percentage of our applications currently, about 5% exist outside that boundary, primarily in Rifle and Newcastle. Those organizations would be, would be exempted from this and would be allowed to continue applying, but for new organizations that have not previously received a grant from the city, they'd be restricted to this Aspen to Glenwood corridor. Another important thing that I, that I want to mention here is we do recognize, right, with the, that there are some services that we can't anticipate, that may not even be available here in the Roaring Fork Valley, that are, that, that may need to be important for Aspen residents or for others in, in, in our area. And so we wanted to make sure that there's an appeal system in place so that if there's an important nonprofit that's providing a service that doesn't exist currently, they can appeal to the grant steering committee and be included as part of our competitive grant application process. An example of this, that's not, they, they are part of our grant-making process, but the River Bridge Regional Center located in Newcastle, providing specialized care for youth in distress is a good example of this.
A couple of quick questions. Yeah, go ahead.
You can go first.
The, i- i- is what's being recommended here to Aspen to Glenwood?
Correct.
Okay. But legacy exemptions, built-in appeal systems, so room for consideration of some relationships I'll save any other questions. I, I guess, Bill, yeah, I want to hear what your, what your question is and then I have a question for council, I suppose.
Thanks. I am supportive of this and I think it's the right direction we should take things in. I want to make sure that we're being appropriately restrictive. So my question is, what is a physical presence?
Yeah, so that, that means historically, the way that we've defined that is either maintaining a, a building or other, you know, physical location or providing direct services within, within that area.
Okay, so it's not as simple as going to get a UPS store mailbox or something like that, right?
Correct. That's the intention.
Great. Thanks.
A question for you. What am I trying to think of here is? You're talking about all three categories of grants.
Correct.
Did you have any conversation around whether they should be treated differently when it came to this? I'm thinking maybe Health and Human Services are maybe a more regional grant applicant pool. Arts and Culture, I could see us focusing more on Aspen and Community Nonprofit, I guess as I would also see as maybe more regional. And I'm comfortable with this. I just asked because I was, did you guys talk about that at all?
Yeah, so I, I, I can speak to it a little bit. You, the, so the first thing is we wanted to make sure that any organization that was providing important services to Roaring Fork Valley residents, if in this quarter it was going to be eligible, so there's the legacy exemption and the built-in appeal system. You have step one to make sure of that. You know, the, the concern about creating different rules for different grant program areas is you.
I get it. Without saying it, it's quite obvious. I get it. All good. Thank you. I just wanted to know if you guys had actually talked about that a little bit and it sounds like you had. Thank you. Are there any questions at this time? You know, this is in the, this is a question for us. They're wondering about council direction with this new grant boundary. So Ward and then Sam.
Yeah, I know, I know that Health and Human Services and some of, I think lift up is down valley and response is down valley. I'm curious in, in the past couple of years, how many Arts and Culture grant requests have come from the Glenwood Springs area?
Natalie, do you know off the top of your head for Glenwood Springs in particular?
Well, she looks, just a historical lens has been, we've been sort of known to be a little more reluctant and funded at a much lower level in arts or culture grant that is further away from Aspen proper and it has to do with creating vibrancy in the arts here first. And so I just want you to know that has, that's a historical element of the program and is not written into the rules. However, it has just been a factor of people applying because there's not been a ton of new established, new organizations in this space that could take on a larger grant from the city of Aspen in that, that area.
Yeah, kind of the direction I'm going with that I think Tori started to get into is that the Arts and Culture, I see that extending at least to Willits and maybe Carbon deal, but I don't, I'm not sure I see that extending to Glenwood Springs. And I was just curious what kind of, what kind of casting has been from Glenwood Springs for funds from, from these, from Aspen?
Yeah, we just checked. It's like around 10 organizations, like from that area, so not a whole lot. Yeah.
And Jim and I were discussing, we can double-check whether there's a nexus test under the new ballot language. We just can't, either of us recall off the top of our head from the 2021 language.
Yeah, I like the idea of keeping the Arts and Culture closer in, but HHS, not only valley-wide, but up and down the corridor a little bit. Thank you. I, I want to say, I think that the three of you are like the roots of a banyan tree. You know, a banyan tree goes up and it comes down and spreads out throughout the area. So you're the foundation and I really appreciate your efforts.
Thanks, Ward. Sam, any input on this?
Yeah, to build off of what Ward said, I would go Aspen to Basalt and because of these legacy exemptions and built-in appeal system, I take a more. I take a more protectionist attitude towards this grant system that should be directly benefiting Aspen. And one of the other thought processes is more money to less grantees. Looking through the list that we approved on March 26th, I've talked to a few nonprofits who were very thankful that we gave them money, but they were also very disappointed that they got less than in years past and didn't get all of what they asked for. And I think those are incredible, amazing community partners that we should be prioritizing over a lot of these down-valley nonprofits. Having said that, once again, the legacy exemption, some of these down-valley nonprofits do directly benefit Aspen, and that should be taken into consideration, but I would shrink the outline to Basalt at the furthest personally.
John?
Yes, I appreciate all the time and effort you spent on this, and I support what you've got here.
Thank you, John. I think what we're hearing is support for what's here currently, but there was a shared sentiment around pulling closer. And the reason I say that is because it's a, it's a fine line. There's not much difference here in what we're talking about. So I think what we want to support at this time is what we've got in front of us with conversations to, around pulling it in. Bill, I'm looking at you because you kind of were.
I do very much share the sentiment of bringing it closer. And the suggestion that I'd offer is maybe the restriction is to the, so you can't even apply unless you're a legacy organization or you choose to appeal. But perhaps, and maybe this is a question more for the steering committee, is like, how do we rank and prioritize more heavily those organizations that more directly impact Aspen specifically and Aspen's community specifically? So maybe that's sort of like the tier two, if everyone's open to that, or the phase two.
Does that make sense for us to give you that input and take it back? Or do you need something more definitive?
I like a little, just a little clarity between Ward, I think I heard Carbondale, but Sam, I heard Glenwood.
Basalt.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm hearing a multiplier, Patrick, based upon geographical distance from Aspen. So Aspen, you're a multiplier of one, and that number decreases going down the valley, something of that effect.
I think.
In the award evaluation. The one other piece I'll just put in there, the historical reason why there's not been a reduction multiplier in the program has been is recognizing that funding of these organizations often are aligned with supporting workforce of the Aspen community who's making these trips up here on a regular basis. So again, it is completely council's call, but traditionally, that is why we fund some things that you may not see direct services in Aspen, but it's rather in recognition of that that entity is providing services directly to the families that are our workforce.
Okay, you know, and Ward was specific around his. He was saying the Arts and Culture, he does support that further regional support in the other, in the others. So pulling it back in, a multiplier, maybe conversations for your steering committee to get their thoughts and input on something like that. But right now, the majority of council is comfortable with what you've got here. And I mean, Ward, I'm just saying, like, not, just not splitting the hairs on the Arts and Culture, but working with this new boundary system that they're kind of proposing. Would that be something that you'd support?
Yeah, I think you introduced the idea of separating the different areas of grants. And as far as, I think Sam and I had a little bit of difference between Basalt and Carbondale on the Arts and Culture. And I think that Carbondale does overlap with us. I certainly think the Five Point Film Festival brings itself up to Aspen and is a worthy organization. And some of the stuff that goes on at Third Street Center. But yeah, generally support this, but with a, some kind of a way to rein in the Arts and Culture to, as Bill said, directly benefit our community.
Yeah.
I would just add, I think discretion here is a good thing. So I think the restrictions that you've proposed are appropriate, and just make sure that there's appropriate discretion and discussion about finding ways to make sure that at least our biggest awards are really directly benefiting Aspen and its community.
I think that that makes sense to me. What I'll take away from this is we'll implement this policy, and then I'll get to work with the staff and steering committee to figure out if there's a way that the steering committee can get comfortable with that provides further prioritization based on how close you are to Aspen.
I think that sounds right.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right, so the next one is about reducing the maximum request. So as Patrick showed you, right, our overall cash requests have doubled in four years, and that number is only increasing more quickly. And a lot of that growth has come from not necessarily new applicants, but increasing request size from existing applicants. That combined with a learning that we've discovered over the last few years is that it's really challenging to make, to have each of our program areas have the same maximum request amount when the budgets available in those programs are pretty different, right? So a $100,000 request last year in the, in our HHS budget, when we had about $200,000 to give out, that's a 50% of the overall program budget requested by one organization. Whereas, you know, $100,000 request in Arts and Culture are closer to 10% of that overall budget. So what we learned from this is that we could do a better job of tempering award expectations by and helping to manage future growth by having maximum requests that are better aligned to individual program budgets. And so what you see here is a basic outline of programs having about a maximum individual request from 10% of those program budgets. And these would change slightly depending on the ultimate budgets approved by council for 2024, 2025 cycle.
Does anybody have any questions around this? Yep, Sam?
Sarah, I wanted to bring your attention to this because I thought you had told me previously that there was potential consideration for, I think, Health and Human Services to just go to Aspen Family Connections and let them hand out the grants?
It's Aspen Community Foundation we've been in discussions with.
Thank you.
So sorry, yeah, a different foundation in the community. We have discussed setting up a special interest fund with the foundation as doing our homework about can this group operate more efficiently using a partner who's already in touch with all of these organizations? There's a lot of control when doing that with Aspen Community Foundation and how that grant agreement, grantor and donor agreement is set up. So we anticipated bringing that conversation back to you a little later after we got through tonight to understand your policy objectives, to see if it has alignment or not.
Got it. Looking at the list from the March 26 meeting, none of these applicants got more than $10,000. And once again, I'm sure they're very happy they got something, but I don't know how many of them were like, well, thanks for almost nothing because I didn't get what I actually wanted. And not to be like rude or anything like that. So I just wanted to say, if we can't find more funding for it, I'm not sure if we should be in the business of Health and Human Services grants because it can be quite insulting sometimes for giving people 10% of what they ask for.
I think, you know, that we certainly had some challenging conversations with our grantees at the conclusion of this cycle, and that's one of the primary reasons why you see this recommended reduction in the maximum request so that we can better manage those applicant expectations. Because when you apply for $100,000 and you get an award of $9,000, you know, that's disappointing, absolutely. And so that's one of the goals here.
So John's running these, sorry, go ahead.
Thanks. So really, it's a policy question for the council again. Is it a little bit to lots, or is it a lot to just a few on very deep issues? And that's really the policy direction we need from the council table. The current direction is continue to provide funding to several organizations at lower dollar amounts, and so that's how the program's designed.
Yeah, and the direction I'd like to give is that I'd rather give more to less. But when it comes to Health and Human Services in particular, I'm very interested in Aspen Community Foundation just taking over. Yeah, because it's funny to me to just lower expectations, say, you can apply for $30,000, but you're still only getting nine. And it just doesn't make me feel like we're in the right business there. And if we can find more money, that'd be even better. But if we can't, I'd rather get out of the game when it comes to that one in particular. Arts and Culture, I think we know we have the money for it in general. I would wonder if we can increase that number, but if not, I mean, that at least is a good chunk, and hopefully we can give more to less on that one. And then Community Nonprofit, I don't know, once again, I'd rather find more money than reduce the amount, but at least 60,000 is not as low as 30 on that one, so.
I just want to reiterate that with the Health and Human Services as it's proposed here, last year was a particularly challenging demand environment combined with some other administrative changes we've made, such as eliminating large two-year grants. So last year, we were previously committed over 50% of our program budget in a two-year grant, and that's no longer going to be the case moving forward. So, you know, these $100,000 requests or 30, if council goes, decides to approve this, this change, I don't anticipate seeing, you know, 9% of a request being approved moving forward. I think that last year was a one-time issue.
How come no change for the Arts and Culture? How many Arts and Culture organizations received $100,000 in grants last year?
None. But several, probably four got close to about 90,000. And one thing to remember too, right, is that the reason that we have our volunteer reviewers is to make sure that even if we have funds available, the job of our volunteers is to make sure that that application asking for 100,000 or 50,000 or whatever it is, is a good use of public dollars. And so the very first thing that our funding process does is it takes how much money you know, was requested and calculates how much money should be given away if we didn't have a budget, right? And so that's what those volunteers are doing, are assessing those applications and making sure that those applications meet the criteria and expectations of council in the grant program.
Because in Arts and Culture, I would be interested in the conversation around limiting that down to $80,000. You said that there were only a couple that were close to 90 and such. And, you know, there's only a couple of hot points that come up through the grant process. There's always questions around some of those well privately funded organizations that get very large grants from the city compared to the other grants that we give out. And then there's the other hotspot of people talking about those that didn't get as much, you know, and maybe they have more need. And we've talked about that as far as need and where that plays into it. But I guess I would put that out in front of this council is to say, on the reduced maximum request, you're seeing it reduced from 100 to 30 on Health and Human Services. That's going to be a larger discussion. We are going to talk a little bit about the potential to move it to the Community Foundation for oversight on that. But even if we do give it to Community Foundation, we will still have some sort of parameters around it that we will probably want to see in place. And then the Community Nonprofit is, was $100,000 as well, reduced to 60. And so my question to council members is, would you like to see Arts and Culture come down to 80? That would give us more ability to spread funds a little bit further. Sam?
For Arts and Culture, I'm pretty sure we have the money from the Wheeler Ret to do $100,000 or potentially even more, and especially if we did more to less and we're way more specific towards Aspen-centric Arts and Culture. So I'd not want to see that go down. I'd like to see more money pumped into that if we can, because we do have the dedicated funding source that brings in a lot of money.
Bill?
I'd add to that, I appreciate the sentiment there, but I don't think the funds can be sort of moved around from one bucket to the other, particularly with respect to Arts and Culture, because those are restricted to that use. So I don't really think we can borrow from Peter to pay Paul.
I was talking specifically about Arts and Culture when I was just speaking.
I understand, but I think what Tori was suggesting, unless I'm misunderstanding.
I was just saying that Arts and Culture category applicants would have a ceiling of $80,000.
Oh, okay.
And part of the reason I say is because one of the conversations that we always have about this are the few organizations that get that grant funding of that level of $90,000 are, for the most part, what I see as very well privately funded. So for public dollars like this, I try to get them to, you know, areas of, of people that have perhaps less access but do just as great work in our community. So no, I wasn't saying mix any categories. I was just saying the Arts and Culture, and I'm just throwing it out, it's not a big deal. I'm just saying, would council like to see that? If that's not a sticking point for anybody else, or you haven't heard that from your community, then maybe the answer is no. Ward?
Yeah, I think I'm in alignment with Sam on this, that the RET fund is adequate to fund and perhaps even increase funding for Arts and Culture. And I think the Tobacco Fund, if we could increase funding from the Tobacco Fund to backfill, and some comes from the General Fund. So as far as Arts and Culture is concerned, I would even entertain more, more funding. I agree that 10% should be the maximum. I think that no nonprofit should be, should be depending on one funding source for a majority of their funding, or perhaps a majority, but not all of it. And that they should be looking for diverse funding. So where we can backfill from the Tobacco Fund, I would support that. And I think we had a pretty healthy balance in the Tobacco Fund. So to entertain that and keep the Arts and Culture strong because the revenue source is strong for that.
So just on the budget questions, both for tobacco tax funds and for some additional money into this core Arts and Culture grant program will be discussed in like two slides.
Right. Okay. Yep.
John had one too, but you want to go first, John?
Sure, I actually agree with Tori's thought processes. I have been approached by several members of the community who wonder why we give up such large grants to organizations that are well-funded and have huge donor bases. And then I've heard from other community members who, I think everybody at this table has heard that, that was disappointed in the amount that they received opposed to the amount that they requested. And both of those situations are understandable, but I would be interested in lowering the Arts and Culture Grant Fund a little bit as well and try to give more money to more people.
Thanks, Bill.
What does our Grant Steering Committee think on this question?
So these numbers here were approved by the Grant Steering Committee. So what you're seeing here is the steering committee recommendation.
Thanks. And have they, has their support been lent to all of the recommendations that you're proposing tonight?
That's correct.
Wonderful, thanks. I'm not in favor of reducing Arts and Culture. I would have a conversation about increasing it, and I'm fine with the rest of your proposals. Thanks.
And when you said you would increase the maximum award or the funds that go towards the grants?
The mask, maximum request.
You would, okay, okay. All right, you have got. All right, you have got support for what you have up here, but you have council members that are interested in possibly talking about raising the ability to apply for more than a hundred thousand dollars in Arts and Culture. Is what I heard from Ward, Sam, and Bill.
To clarify, I to spread the money around a hundred thousand dollars going to, say, the Aspen Art Museum, to be specific, seems to be excessive, because they have a huge donor base and they have a huge salary for their executive director. So yeah, I guess I might be a little bit off target here as far as the maximum. If you're, if the suggestion is a hundred thousand dollars as the maximum and not as overall funding, yeah, I think, I don't support these big, you know, the Aspen Music Festival and Aspen Art Museum, they're well-funded. And to give them a hundred thousand dollars, when you have other organizations that can use that funding well.
So I think we have two different questions here. It seems like council's talking a fair amount about need-based giving, which the grant program has not considered. And just some quick background on why is, until now, council and the Steering Committee have been focused on the amount of impact public dollars can have in the community. And whether that impact is coming from a large organization or a smaller organization was irrelevant to the grant program. It's all about, you know, the amount of money going out into the community. And I will also remind council that sometimes large organizations, right, have resources and expertise in order to efficiently distribute and utilize these funds in ways that smaller organizations can't. And that's why it's really, it's been historically really important to the grant program to support both small and large organizations, to take advantage of the strengths of both. But I would like to, if that is a conversation council wants to have, I'd like to just make sure that it's different from this one, because I do believe these are distinct questions that are being discussed here.
Council is having a reaction to what we see come through the Grants Program year after year after year. It's not really a conversation about needs-based. But what we're seeing, the results of the Grant Program, are that the only organizations are getting these large, are the large organizations. And I would say to you that, you know what, those larger organizations also have the resources to be more effective at grant applications as well as fundraising. So, you know, the smaller organization, whether it's need or not, I mean, they're, they, you know, they're under the same pressures. So what I'm hearing here is, from our lens, I hear now, I think, three people are saying that, hey, those high-grant awards are one of the kind of hot issues that we hear from our community. And so we're sitting here saying, well, a small cap on that Arts and Culture of eighty thousand, because it's, we're not decimating that, we're not doing a big change there. I hear you, I get your point, we've had this conversation a couple times. Why don't we, why don't we have that? Well, I don't really want to get into the needs-based evaluation for the Grants Program. So I'm going to look at my council members one last time and just say, is there support for making the Arts and Culture maximum application? Is there support for changing it from a hundred thousand to eighty thousand? From members of this council? Ward?
Well, the Steering Committee is recommending keeping it the same. It's up to the committees to decide if they want to grant a whole hundred thousand dollars. They're, like you say, they're very few that really get that, I think. You know, if we go in that eighty thousand direction, Tori understanding more fully, what we're talking about here is that we're just talking about individual grant maximums that I think I could support the eighty thousand.
Okay. Sam, you've talked about raising it, yes?
I just think there's an important clarification to make here, if I may. And I apologize, because you started down the line, may I? Because when you make it down to eighty thousand as the request, the way the formula works, no one will ever receive eighty thousand dollars. I just want to be really clear on that. So you will be reducing these larger grant awards, because how the formula disperses the funds does not accomplish that. So you will reduce the larger ones with a reduction in what they're allowed to apply for. We had no one reach their full grant amount. They are all done, or at least ten percent less than what was requested.
So just to clarify, in my mind, that if we send a strong message from the council table that we don't support hundred thousand dollar grants, and I would say to these larger organizations, keep it at a hundred thousand dollars so we're not kneecapping some of the smaller Arts and Cultures.
But if the request is to balance that, we can look at whether it's based on annual revenues, assets. We can look at two classifications of Arts and Culture organizations and ask the Steering Committee to work on that and come back to you with some ideas, if that's the council's concern. So I don't want you to feel like it only has to be this one cap. There's other ways to resolve your concern here.
That would be, yes.
And just to clarify, so last year, we had the highest award in Arts and Culture was eighty seven thousand dollars, and the second highest was seventy nine thousand.
John?
Yeah, what is the Arts and Culture maximum right now?
One hundred thousand.
Okay. I'm going to say, based on our discussion and what Sarah had to say, I'm comfortable with it staying at a hundred thousand. I mean, you just stated that the two highest awards were much lower than that anyway. And I like to put faith in the people who serve on our boards.
Sounds great. We can move on, because we're not going to work that question anymore. It'll stay the way that it is here, no change for that. Reduced from Community Nonprofit, sixty, reduced from a hundred. Health and Human Services, thirty, reduced from a hundred thousand. But we're going to have further conversations about this. All right.
All right, so now we're going to move into the pilot programs that Patrick talked about at the start of this. So the first two, the Health and Human Services Capacity Building and the Asset and Acquisition Assistance, which was for Arts and Culture, we're both really proud of. They were new ideas, they funded some really cool projects. But we are recommending that they both be discontinued for different reasons. So the Capacity Building has been a really rewarding project to work on. It's really been impactful and successful and helped some Health and Human Services organizations get better at things that traditionally they've struggled to do well. The second year just started, we have a really great cohort we're excited about. But the county has stood up a very similar program. And the city staff has been working with our partners, who also are grant makers in the area, namely the Picken County, the Aspen Community Foundation, and SKECO, and are working on sort of collaborating and not competing. And so as the county stood this up, it makes sense for us to step away at this time, knowing that this work is continuing in our valley. And with the Asset and Acquisition Assistance Program, it was designed to fund minor capital projects or capital purchases for things like equipment. And after some experience with the restricted eligibility, so council at the time restricted this program to Arts and Culture organizations with a physical presence in Aspen. And it turns out, it's the applicant pool size doesn't really merit this program continuing. It's about fifteen organizations.
Are there any questions here, or is everybody in agreement?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
And then one other item, so what staff and the Steering Committee are recommending from the Asset and Acquisition Grant is it has an annual budget of two hundred and fifty thousand. And the majority of that, we recommend rolling into that Arts and Culture budget of nine hundred thousand, with a little bit going to the Cultureal Vibrancy Fellowship, which we'll discuss next.
We accept the proposal.
And so here, Tori, you were able to join us for the final celebration of this program. It was really, really rewarding to see. Council directed us to stand up this program with the wonderful support of Sarah Roy, the Red Brick Director, behind us. This program would not have happened without her and Lisa, and Lisa Riggsby-Petersen from the Wheeler, with the idea of injecting some new life into Aspen's art scene. And I personally really believe that that was successful. I think that the youth artists in particular were able to see themselves in Aspen in a way that previously maybe they didn't. And that final convening really gave us some good ideas for how to improve the program next year. And that's really to focus on bolstering mentorship between our professional adult artists and the youth artists who would like to join them one day, and building a little bit more crossover between those cohorts. So we think that a modest increase in the program budget makes sense in order to do this. And the reason for that is because we're still conducting outreach with our participants, and so I don't have our survey data back yet. But anecdotally, it seems like the thirty five hundred dollar stipend that was given to our adult artist was meaningful, but not quite enough for them to be able to truly take time out of their work and their careers and to engage and mentor our youth artists. And that's something that we'd really like to build into this program next year. And so you're raising this program budget by twenty to forty thousand dollars to be able to provide a little bit more for artists and ask for a little bit more in return is something we're working on. And the additional funds for this would also come from the discontinued Asset and Acquisition Grant, so there'd be no net change to the budget.
So in your conversations and evaluating the program, where it's successful, where it had challenges, you came back out of it saying, you know what, let's do more.
That's correct.
You think that that had good impact and worth the dollars, worth even more dollars, good impact? Council's goal of art in Aspen and cultural vibrant, yeah, you're shaking your heads, okay.
They're nodding their heads.
Well, I mean, I was there, I got to tell you guys, I mean, it was, especially the kids. The adults were great, and it was really neat to support some adult artists. But these kids and what they talked about, their experience, it was, it was, it was pretty amazing. So I appreciate you coming back with this, thanks. Are there any questions or comments? Phil's good with it? Johnny?
I'm good.
My only comment would be, I appreciate this, I support it, but in the mentorship side, I'd like to see some emphasis on economic sustainability to the youth, how they can capitalize their art.
Yeah, I think this year, that kind of came from osmosis. We had a few quotes from the youth artists who said, they never thought that it was even possible to be a professional artist in Aspen, because they didn't see anyone. And as a part of this program, right, they met eight professional artists in Aspen. And so even just being able to see that it was possible was a great story, and we look to build on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, John?
I'd just like to say, as an artist, that's exactly how I experienced it. I saw people in Aspen that actually made a living creating art, and that inspired me to do it. So I fully support this, thanks.
Thanks, thank you guys.
All right, so our last proposal is about tobacco tax funds prioritization. So council was involved in a work session, I believe on May tenth, where you agreed to contribute the first two hundred and fifty thousand dollars collected, or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually to support Aspen Family Connections. What the Steering Committee and staff would like to recommend is that the Health and Human Services grants become a priority for any remaining funds. That'll help provide predictability. Hopefully, you raise that two hundred and twenty thousand dollar budget a little bit in a sustainable and meaningful way. And also really get those funds that are, you know, already accrued and that tobacco tax balance more quickly out into the community.
Thank you for that. I think there's a lot of interest in something like this. My questions around it are about, what is, what is council's, future council's discretionary ability? Sarah, we talked briefly about this, and I was wondering about keeping some of our powder dry. So the first two, we're seeing tobacco tax collections in the neighborhood of three hundred and twenty to three hundred and forty thousand dollars, perhaps. I don't know if that'll go up or down. If we allocate the first two fifty, let's say, let's just, let's go three hundred. So there's fifty thousand dollars extra a year. All of the remaining funds could go to the grant program. Then the availability of the funds to be distributed that year, how would that be decided? And would future councils have any, any funds that they could allocate if there was a need or something that they saw in the Health and Human Services that a council was like, hey, we'd love to make an additional grant to this, similar to like what we did with Response and stuff?
So a couple of things, just a reminder that the tobacco tax is a fund, is a little F on our ledger. So it actually all goes into the General Fund. But we made a commitment to voters about specified uses of those dollars. We, every year, exceed, out of the General Fund expenses, that annual revenue collection. So I just want to be real clear, we've met our obligation under the ballot question. The, what we do though, is we've gone ahead and funded the intergovernmental agreements that are considered Health and Human Services out of revenues that are not from the tobacco taxes. And that's another, what, three hundred and twenty thousand is my recollection each year that we pay in additional Health and Human Services to the community through intergovernmental agreements. And so that's the Senior Center, Detox, and
Adult.
Mental Health, yes. And so what this would do is, is we would just bring back to you a new IGA with the school district to provide that two hundred and fifty thousand per year. And when we collect things, how we'd work is we would just suggest that we would go back and we would look at what, for the twenty twenty-five budget, we would look at what the audited twenty twenty-three revenues were. And whatever that number is, minus two hundred and fifty thousand, so let's say the delta's fifty thousand, we would put in the twenty twenty-five awards, right? Because I need an audited financial statement to guarantee the number, is what my recommendation for you would be. And then you get it out as soon as you can after that, which would be the next grant cycle. And we usually have those audited financials, we have to have them by June thirtieth, but generally, we have them sooner than that here. And we'll continue to operate that way. So how does that work in all of this? And also, we'll give you an estimate from an appropriations process, so that when you come in for a budget review, we'll have the audited twenty-three numbers to present to you in the twenty-five budget development to say, this is what you have, do you want all of it to go to Health and Human Services grants that year on the programmatic side? Or would you like to hold some of that for some other use that you can identify back to staff at that time? My recommendation to you is, is don't save it for the just-in-case, maybe future thing. If that really comes around, you have your General Fund fund balance for it. I'd rather these dollars get right back out into the community in a reasonably fast timeframe and use your General Fund reserve if there's something really important to the council to go ahead and contribute to, such as a capital project.
Great, and that also gives us the opportunity at budget to, if there was something else, could do withholding for that. Okay, that satisfies me with it then. then. I think I think, yeah, I mean, I think this is what we've been talking about.
Yes.
Good?
It is. But I do want to add Health and Human Services, there's a good chance I want to go under Aspen Community Foundation and not be our grants anymore, or in that same in the same way that it is now.
Right.
But yes.
Okay. Yes, proposal accepted.
Well, gold stars for answering all the questions along the way. So I think I think we're done here, but let's just do a quick recap. I think we are on board with restricting grant eligibility based on organization zip code as proposed, but this but there's some direction for the steering committee to explore further prioritization if you're closer to Aspen within this grant cycle. And then we'll grant steering committee will explore and run with that. We will limit maximum grant request amounts based on program budgets as proposed. We will discontinue the asset and acquisition assistance grant. We'll discontinue the Health and Human Services Capacity Building Grant. We will continue and expand the Cultural Vibrancy Fellowship and will annually contribute some additional monies from the tobacco tax funds to support HHS based on financial audits.
Bill?
Agree with everything you just said. Thanks, John. Separately, I'm interested in creating a pathway for grantees to request perhaps large, one-time grants from the city that don't conform to these parameters. And I don't have specific ideas for how to really structure this, but between the three of you and the and the grant steering committee, I think I'm hopeful there's support to to ask everyone to work on that a little bit because we have gotten some of those requests and they don't seem to fit into any kind of box. But we have the money for it and we have the interest in it in certain circumstances. We don't really have a pathway for it. So I'd be interested in creating some kind of like pathway, even even if it was informal compared to this. But at least something that we can point people to go and like, this is how you go about making a request like that that doesn't fit into the normal grant.
So currently, it's probably you're talking about situations that would require somebody to come in front of council during public comment almost.
Yeah, perhaps. Response is a great example of it, right? That request from response is not something that really fits into to this box. It wasn't in the same timing, didn't fit the timing, out of cycle, unusual. You know, if response had come to me and said, how do you get? How do I get this done? How do I make this request? There isn't really like a clear defined pathway for that. So I I know we were able to guide them and able to get that to them eventually. But but we do have this money sometimes and and there can be a lot of good that's done with this money. And I think these requests will continue to come. So I think some kind of conduit for this, again, can be much more informal than this and probably should be, but something.
Yeah. So the current process right now is, quite honestly, those executive directors call me, or in some cases, will call someone on this team and they'll turn it over to me. And we we have a conversation about what's their readiness to actually make an ask because that is sometimes the challenges that they want you as their big first contribution. But we haven't seen development of of the pro forma of the campaign and clear objectives, whether they're operating or capital campaigns. So recently, you've been brought to capital campaigns and then in operate, the mayor brought forward an operating request outside of the grant cycle. So that is how we've handled it. I will tell you, historically, the council has not wanted to entertain a lot of these, regardless of which council it was sitting at this table. And part of that being is is particularly on the capital side is the philanthropic nature of our valley. And that is very tangible giving and has a lot of benefits for the nonprofit and the donor in those settings, whereas the government has been funding things that are perhaps a little less sexy to be part of. Nevertheless, my suggestion would be to use, you can continue the process now or those folks get in touch with one of these staff members or myself, and we start the process there with some of our initial screening of readiness before proposals is is floated by you to see if you're willing to spend work session time on it to review the request. The other alternative is you could actually set a dollar amount in your annual budget for these kinds of requests, and we formalize it a bit more that way. Your grants committee right now isn't necessarily staffed or organized to handle the evaluation of capital, large capital requests, right? The training and what we're asking these people to do is through a very clearly defined program, and hence council is typically wanting to manage those one-offs. I will tell you, it's somewhat challenging to find all twenty volunteers. We need to run this program right now. So I would I would encourage a more informal process that has some staff screening and council involvement, rather than pushing those back out for community review through your grant reviewers. That would be my my gut instinct. Lastly, I do have direction on the arts and culture that we would not be funding capital contribution requests. And so the arts and culture groups all know that clearly. That was a decision made back in, I think, twenty twenty-two, twenty-one, somewhere around in there, when the grant amount was increased, that it would be for equipment that does needed, but not for building new buildings, new theaters, new roofs that have the ability to to runoff of a capital campaign.
That's all good feedback. Again, I don't have the answers of exactly how to structure this, but some kind of guidelines, perhaps. You know, I'm not saying that the current program is totally broken, but there's also nothing, I don't think there's anything out there publicly saying, these are the kind of things that might qualify for this. These are the kind of things that we're definitely not going to entertain. Don't waste your time. Some something, and this is who you should contact and this, this is, you know, how long it will take. And these are the sort of steps of of what would be involved, even if that's similar to what we have been doing in the past. I think just kind of clarifying what that what that pathway is and what the process is could be valuable.
Sure. We have a staff member actually already assigned to be doing some research on this from other communities because we too wanted to be able to provide some clarity. So it's a challenge project for one of our folks here at the table tonight.
I was curious.
I wonder who it is based on the spot.
Bill, I'm just curious if you're you were specifically talking about a capital campaign?
There's certainly one that is in my mind. But I don't know that it needs to exclusively be for capital campaign stuff. You know, someone could come to us with like this idea for this incredible program, but to start the program, they think costs a million dollars, right? And obviously, that does not fit into this into these boxes. And it could all be operational costs. There's no capital cost in that startup. It could be, you know, we need to
It's a good idea.
Yeah. But it's a great idea. It's something that we all think we could use in our community. You know, even if it's if if it's a sort of murky process, I think we should have a process for it, I guess is the point.
I think what I'm hearing is an acknowledgement for out of cycle grant requests, right? So even if that's just one thing that says, if you are, if you're interested, contact one of you, you know, but even acknowledging that, here's what you do. If you are out of cycle grant and you want to ask, here's who, here's where you start. I think it'd be a good
Yeah, a little more fleshed out than that, saying like, this is, you know, these are the steps that you will likely have to go through, pre-screening with staff, you know, all the way up to approval by council kind of thing.
Perhaps.
And then again, if I'm totally open, and I would encourage a conversation with the grant steering committee of like, what kind of things should be, should we be open to on this? Which kind of thing should we be totally closed to? And, you know, we can weigh in on that, too, if you like, but.
The last thing I would add with that is that we would not, I'll just tell you as a boundary, is that we would not have, for example, other government entities come through that way. All other government entities have to come through intergovernmental agreements, and those typically are arranged through my office for negotiation. So I just want to make sure we have clarity because we don't grant to pass through grant programs, right? The exception could be is if the council chooses to set up a donor-directed fund at the Aspen Community Foundation, we're pretty far away from even that conversation or decision making. But like, we don't find a united way that's then going to redistribute the money or a community education foundation that is going to redistribute the money. And it's very intentional. The council's been very specific about being able to follow that dollar from our pocketbook into that organization's pocketbook without an intermediary to show the direct impact. Thanks.
Yeah, I like that. And that's one of those things that that this document or this what a work product could clearly state is just, you know, if if united way or whatever that example was came to me and said, you know, we want funding, I go look at that thing and they'll see right away that we don't do that. So.
Thanks. Consideration of that, I think, is important.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys. I just want to say one thing. You guys are a good team. You really show well, this while it seems like this is a topic that should be super easy. Hey, we're giving away money. It's not. It's complicated. And oftentimes, it's really emotionally charged. And I just want to thank you guys for how professionally you've handled this workload. John, I've bugged you several time and several times, and you are always very accommodating and patient with me, and I appreciate that. And I just think that you guys do a really great job. So thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate the kind words.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you all.
Proposal accepted. Our next agenda item is potential ballot questions for this November ballot. And Ann, thank you.
Hi, everybody. All alone, Pete.
I know. I don't know what I did.
Clear the room, you do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pete Strucker, Finance Director for the city. I am here tonight to wrap up the evening, I believe, and talk about two different issues. The first one tonight is around potential ballot questions for November. I spoke to the council back in March about these four possibilities, and I basically had general understanding and acceptance to move forward with these. I do think we had one or two outstanding questions, though, that we needed to go through. So real briefly, the first two ballot questions would be related to extending sunset dates on existing taxes. One is for the housing real estate transfer tax. The other one is on a shared sales tax for affordable housing and for childcare. And so the council had asked or was generally supportive of moving those forward, but with a question, I think, that was still outstanding was whether or not we wanted to go to a certain term and how far to go out. I put a proposal in in the packet tonight to push it out to twenty sixty, which is an extra twenty-year extension. That actually, actually, that twenty-year extension is a common thing we've used in the past for some other tax extensions as well. But it also aligns fairly well with the aspect of if we went into a debt situation and tried to leverage these revenue streams for that debt service, that that would time well for the end of phase one on on a particular large project, that being the lumberyard. Any questions on that particular ballot measure? I have included draft language in in the packet for all of these questions. I'd probably want to do a final look through with the legal team before moving forward with the final resolution back to the council.
Sam?
Yeah, just want to be really clear. If the ballot measure were to fail, could you go for how long? Do you have to wait to go for it again? Can you go for it again?
On any regular election cycle, we would be able to do that. So there is some time. The issue would be if there is a need for debt service to kind of wrap up the lumberyard on phase one, and that really prioritized all of our funds. If we did not have that, that would potentially preclude other opportunities in the housing fund that may come up in that duration of time.
Yeah, just want to make sure that you can go for it again, but I would be confident that would pass.
Bill?
Pete, if we did not have the RET, how much debt could we support under current interest rates using other
Yeah, the real, the affordable housing real estate transfer tax is a significant revenue stream for that program. Without a affordable housing real estate transfer tax, you're looking at bringing in collections right now from the combined sales tax roughly million and a half, because we prioritize a lot more to the childcare program at this point. And then we have seventy percent of the new STR excise tax coming here, which is probably going to pencil in around five million a year, maybe six. So if you're having a revenue stream roughly of six to eight million dollars a year, basically coming into this fund, current interest rate environments, you're maybe able to leverage that. And again, I'd probably put in a caution, you know, a cushion so you're not in in consideration of not being able to meet your debt service payment, probably seventy million dollars.
And and I think the way you answered my question is about funding that's specific to housing, funding that's allocated specific to housing.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yep.
So let me broaden the question a little bit.
Okay.
What if it's a GOB?
So if you're pledging full faith and credit of the city and you basically are going to raise a property tax, you have a lot of room. The Constitution limits you to twenty percent of your property tax base, your actual actual value on your property. It's pretty significant for the city of Aspen.
Far exceeding the lumberyard needs, even if we had zero in the one fifty fund.
Yeah, but you would then definitely have to raise that tax question to the voters.
Because all GOBs need to be individually approved on a ballot.
And a new property tax measure. Yep.
Two questions.
And a property, okay. So the reason I ask it is because I'm curious whether we even need to ask about the RET until we sort of further solidify what the funding needs for for and funding sources for the lumberyard are going to be. It's not, the RET is not the only option, right? Not the only option for for issuing debt. It's not the only option for funding the project. At the very least, I want to make sure that's clear to everybody. It's not the only option. We're fortunate to have other resources and other capacities. And I don't think we, I don't think the need, in my mind at least, is clearly defined of what the dollars are going to be or where exactly they should come from. So.
Could I ask a clarifying question of Mr. Goose?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. So the proposal we have before you is a no new tax for the community, whereas all other mechanisms that you're referencing would require a new property tax or a new sales tax or use tax or whichever form of tax. So I just could use some clarity. My understanding from the council was the intention was to go forward with a no new tax approach as we have organized the one fifty fund. And that has been the direction for at least the last four years. So particularly coming into budget season, if majority of council, it wants us to be looking at new tax revenues rather than a no new tax scenario, that'd be very helpful information for Pete and I because it would definitely maybe change our priorities because of a higher risk of a new tax passing or failing versus a renewal question. Thank you. And the timing of, thank you, I'll just stop there.
So was that a question of me or everyone?
You, but others we want to weigh in.
I'm happy to go first.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm only thinking about this in the context of the lumberyard. And again, I don't, to me, the funding need is not crystal clear. My priority is to do that project in one phase. And if that means we need to do a GOB for thirty million dollars or something relatively small in the grand scheme of things, I'm open to that conversation. I'm just not, I'm not ready to have that conversation yet because I don't know what the partnership structure is going to look like yet. I don't know what the what the real funding needs are going to be. Again, my point is it's not the only source, and it's not all we should be relying on forever and always here. There might be other mechanisms to use that that are intelligent to use strategically. I don't have clear direction for Sarah personally today. I just want everyone to sort of contemplate that in relationship to this ballot question.
Did you have comment, Ward? Yeah, I think that, um, the community's been hit with a pretty hefty property tax increase recently. That we have perhaps a ballot issue for increased funding from B O C C for housing this tax cycle. In the near future, we'll, our relatively new fut- future, the county might be asking for a lot of money for the airport. I think that eventually we're going to probably need to extend this, the, the RET, but I would feel more comfortable letting things settle off for a couple more years, a few more years, until we get some more clarity on, um, what kind of tax, and the school district is probably going to have a property tax question as well. So we've, the, the, the community's been hit with some pretty hefty tax increases in the last couple of years. And I, I think that this, as Sam said, I think we, the community will support because they have previously supported extending the RET and the Wheeler RET. But I feel more comfortable not putting it on for this, this election cycle and maybe waiting a couple of years and having things settle out more clarity on this one large capital project. We have evidently enough to get through phase zero and that the increase in funding requests are going to be beyond that 27 timeframe. So I, I would push this back and not put it on a ballot this year. Sam.
Yeah, for doing comments, um, the clarity I'm looking for is to have this guaranteed until 2060 so that the lumberyard know it has this revenue source. And like Sarah said, this is not a new tax, it's a continuation. And that's why I'll, I'll just speak and say that I support all these ballot measures because they are just continuations or clarity changes that I think are necessary and give this community the clarity it needs to move forward and support affordable housing like it has, so.
Thanks, Sam. John?
Yeah, I, I, I think this is the way to go forward. I'm not against putting it on the ballot sooner rather than later because I'd, I'd like to see the, the sense of security that comes with that. And as far as raising new revenues through a new tax, I, I think as Ward stated, right now would be bad timing for that.
Okay. Bill, yours, the question is, to run this question this November or not? I think you just shared saying, not this November?
I, I didn't share that, um, but I will share that. I, I think I'm in Ward's camp, I like Ward's idea of, of doing it in the next cycle, not this cycle. Thanks.
I appreciate that.
Break the tie.
I'm for putting it on the ballot. My question would be about November versus March. If we put this, it, it does not matter. You can ask it on this November ballot, you could ask it on March, municipal, county, doesn't matter. So, um, yeah, I, I'm comfortable with putting it on. Bill, I really appreciate that discussion though and, and having that broader range of, of options and opportunities. And I don't see these as exclusive. I think that what this real estate transfer tax does is, uh, the lumberyard is only one part of it. I think we've all shared our desire for some more, uh, non-development solutions. And so I think there's going to, you know, perhaps as we look to, for future balance in our housing in this community, um, you know, we might need those other opportunities as well outside of this lumberyard project because this lumberyard project is just one leg of the stool. So I, I, I can support it going forward. I, I'd, I'd like to ask, if we can ask and ask and, and, yeah, I, I, I'm supportive of it.
Okay. Thank you for that clarity. The next ballot question that was going to be discussed was the motor vehicle tax and basically switching that from a sales tax that we currently do to a use tax to kind of conform with the rest of the state, quite honestly. This would actually result in a decrease in taxation by 5.3%, moving it down to the 2.1% that the city actually collects and retains on our own sales tax. We do not retain the other 0.3% that goes to the school district. So by moving this over to a use tax, we would basically be taxing slightly less on those particular sales. The other part of that question is how to best apply the collections from this use tax. Currently, the sales tax gets spread across all sorts of benefactors, including the public, uh, public education, but also parks and open space, transportation, kids first and housing development. This would be, in the language that's being proposed, just dedicate these resources to the infrastructure for transportation.
I'm a yes.
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 Yep.
I'm, I'm also a yes, though, my only question is, we're only dedicating 0.15% of this towards transportation. And given that it's a use tax or sales tax, I don't know what the right term is on this, for vehicles, that doesn't feel right to me. I love supporting parks and open space and I, and I like that there's a good chunk to that. I like supporting affordable housing and daycare, I like there's, there's a good chunk to that. I like supporting public education. But the, the lowest prioritized or lowest funded use is transportation. That doesn't sit right with me.
That is actually the current sales tax split, that is not the proposed use tax split.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that, that's just how current split is on each of these sales for the, the tax collection. What we would be moving to is actually 100% towards transit infrastructure.
Fantastic, thank you for clarifying.
Yep.
Yes.
Never mind.
That's what you meant.
Kell Redner.
We hit it.
All right.
The last one is, is a bit more just due to the factor of our city charter and essentially trying to adopt a new franchise agreement with Holy Cross to use it right away to provide services for the community. That expired in 2023 and so we need to re-up that, the proposals for another 10 years.
Yes.
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 Perfect.
Thanks for that.
Yes.
I have one additional question. Armory redevelopment, and we've been talking about funding sources for armory redevelopment. Maybe our last work session, we had a conversation about a possible bonding? Would we need voter approval for su- such activity?
You will unless you do a certificate of participation option.
Okay. Depending on how conversations go in the next two months, I think, would we be? I mean, we don't need to consider it for November, honestly, we could just do it in March.
I, I would suggest it would be premature for this November. You need to look at the modeling we're working on right now for the asset management plan fund. And consider trade offs in there. I will tell you what we're leaning towards is, um, we're evaluating partial project borrowing versus full project borrowing. Just looking at project risk and other risk factors in the community that you need to have resources available to address moving forward. So that is not something we're ready to make a full presentation on. The, the, the thing is, is to, is right, you have certificates of participation have been used multiple times in this community and it does give the council the flexibility to make that decision at any time without having to go through a voter approval process. You also have again, the option of internal fund advances. If you were to contemplate only, um, staying within our, our own resources. And those have 10 year paybacks based on the 10 year treasury.
That's borrowing from one fund to pay?
Interfund advance is, is exactly what it says, taking funds from one fund and advancing it to another with a bar, a borrowing agreement in essence of what the council establishes, what the repayment interest rate is, should that have, fund had maintained those dollars whole in its fund the entire time. And we use the 10 year treasury note as, to set the, the interest rate.
Okay, thanks for that.
I just wanted to add, in the interest of talking about all these things, I, I think this election could be the great clarifying election. It's not like a RET, the, the, that tax is a referendum on the lumberyard, but seeing that supported is a support for affordable housing. There might be an airport ballot question. And if we don't decide here as a council, I think there should be an entrance to Aspen ballot question. So this might be a big clarifying election for this community that needs clarity on these some key issues.
It's possible, there's a lot of discussion still around what question for the entrance to Aspen would go to the voters. So we'll be figuring that out as we get there. But I'll remind you, you know, this is November, we've got, you know, March elections for the municipal, so.
I know, I think sooner the better as we talk about that, but that's for another time.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll figure out what we could, could even bring to the voters, but we'll see. All right, you have got three minutes to cover food tax refund program.
All right, I'll do fast. So just bringing this back to the council, prior to setting the budget for 2025, we had a conversation about increasing the food tax refund program. We increased that to $85 for the 24 awards and just completed that program. So I put a recommendation together for the council, which is something similar to what you saw at that last meeting. Basically moves the refund award to $132 in 2025. That would als, the recommendation also includes discontinuing the senior bump as well as the blind, legally blind bump. Trying to basically bring the program back to that strong tie between the, the increase over time for the cost of food and the intent behind the program originally. So it would, it would discontinue those two additional amounts, but increase the singular award substantially from the $85.
Anybody have questions there, Bill?
One quick one, but I just wanted to note that you did say $132, but somewhere in the beginning your memo, memo says 135, so I just want to make sure the correct number is 132, which I assume it is, just wanted to make sure.
I'm sorry, you are correct.
No problem. And number two, this is more of a process question, but I know in the past you've talked to me about how intensive it is from a staff resource perspective to process these refunds. And, and I wanted to put it out there, you don't need to answer it tonight necessarily, but I'm supportive of you if there is a more efficient way to process these, whether that's based on tax returns, people filing their tax returns with Aspen addresses or, or some other mechanism, which you might be more creative on than, than me. Even if it wasn't something that was, that had to be applied for, but was just received based on generally meeting the criteria, I, I'm open to exploring that. And again, we don't need to discuss that today, but I know it's intensive and I, I don't want the cost of administering the program to, to outweigh the benefits afforded to the community by this program. So definitely supportive of this and, and supportive of talking further about how we can make it more efficient.
We'll look at that for sure, thank you.
Sam?
Uh, yeah, I thought the 132 number was for this year and that there'd be an escalation to next year.
So we have to always wait for when the increase will be available by the government, by BLS. So that doesn't typically come out until after we've already started the budget process. So that's why I basically was sticking with the number I've put out because we want to make sure that we can just do one year and arrears look back for what did the inflationary increase go by.
And thank you for that answer, that's okay with me. Can we build in an escalator based on this equation? So that's not, it's 132 next year, but the year after that, it will be that times whatever the equation you have got going.
I think we can keep an eye on how does inflation move that number up and we'll have that in time for budget setting so that we can bring that forward every time.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for getting rid of the other parts to it, this hopefully simplifies it in some ways.
I support this, but I do not support doing away with a bump for seniors and blind people. The seniors' income in expendable income is, is decreased. And so I, I, I don't support getting away with a bump for the seniors and blind. And I don't think there are very many blind that apply, but I, I do support keeping that in, in the food tax refund. I know Sam is against it and I'm just curious what the rest of the council feel.
I, I, I want more information. I, I don't really understand the nexus or the correlation between age and an award for a food tax refund. I don't know the correlation there. What we saw in our packet was that it is based on, uh, an individual spending $5,500 per year, a hundred dollars a week and change or whatever. But, um, so for me, I'd just be interested in more information about the nexus between age and doubling of a food tax refund.
Yeah, I, I don't have any.
Well, I don't expect you to.
We can't find the rationale for that decision making whenever it was done by the council and the review of the records. I, I just want to be transparent for you, we were not able to provide that for you. We can tell you the number of people who made that ask.
Do I have that?
Thank you, Ward. Thank you, buddy. Have a great night.
We had 621 seniors this last year.
I think the last time we spoke about this, it might have been Bill, but someone said that we, we, we just increased it a ton. So it felt like a good time to reset the program and simplify it. And that's where I did change my attitude on the blind and senior addition, that we finally got it back up to speed. So that was the logic I was taking as far as like why it's okay now to just make it a clean slate and just whoever applies gets this amount and there's no doubling.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm in the same camp.
And perhaps it helps in the efficiency of administration as well.
A little bit.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for all of that, Pete. Thank you to Grassroots, tomorrow night we'll be back with our regularly scheduled meeting, that is at 5:00 PM. We welcome citizen comments, so if you want to join us tomorrow here at City Hall, citizen comments start the meeting off at 5 o'clock. Thank you, Grassroots.